Good evening, everyone. It is wonderful to see you. I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. Ms. Rios, could you please take the roll?
Yes, of course. Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Ms. Campos? Mr. Dix?
Here.
Ms. Knox?
Ms. Martorano?
Here.
Dr. Mayberry Mays?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
We have quorum.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Board colleagues, I'd like to entertain a motion to rearrange the meeting agenda and move the reimagining educations up next. May I have a motion and a second to approve the revised agenda?
Martorano, so moved.
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Mr. Dix. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, five to zero. We are now... Are we doing public comment? Okay. Okay. We are now going to turn it over to our superintendent to present the topic of reimagining education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. We have had a lot of really exciting and celebratory days in the past two years, I will say, but certainly today is one of those that ranks right up there. At this point, Madam Chair, I know that we are going to present to you all today the signatures gathered for us to move forward with putting our reimagined education plan as we pursue a general obligation bond on the November ballot. Procedurally, I want to remind our partners that in order for us to move forward with a bond on the ballot, we needed a community's investment, thumbs up or vote of confidence, and that needed to manifest itself in the form of signatures. Procedurally and legally, we were required to have, I believe, 7,024 signatures in order for this to happen. Well, as a result of tireless, tireless engagement and hours by so many volunteers in this community, the Des Moines community, you've showed up, you've showed out, and you've said to us, we are moving in the right direction, and you've given the board, superintendent, and team a thumbs up by setting forth 9,000, a little over 9,000 signatures. And I was told that this is the most significant amount of signatures of any school district or organization in the history of Iowa who has gone after G O bond. And so, community, I know the board chair will echo that. I want to say a heartfelt thank you on behalf of 5,000 adults and more than 30,000 students we serve every single day. So, Madam Chair, with that, it is only fitting that we present you with these signatures. Who else should present these signatures other than those who we are here to serve every single day? And so, with us today, we have some rock stars, and I want to call them to come forward. From East High School, we have Araceli Aguilar, and from the downtown school, we have Arjun Noragunen and Graham Crowe to come forward to present. Additionally, Tristan Hodges. Arjun, Graham, Araceli, and then certainly Tristan, you all are representing more than 30,000 other students in this moment. As you are presenting at this historic moment, the signatures that will allow our board to make a decision today about moving forward with a bond on the ballot. I just want to ask you, if you could share with us your name, what grade you are in, and if there's anything else you want to tell us. We are happy to listen to what that is, right? Anything you want to tell us.
My name... You want to go first? He's excited. My name is Tristan Hodges. I'm in eighth grade, and I'm a little bit of a... I'm a bit of autism.
Thank you for being here, Tristan. Let's give it a round of applause, please.
My name is Araceli Aguilar. I am from East High, and I'm a junior. My future goals is to become a pilot, and I think your plan is fabulous.
My name is Arjun, and I go to DTS, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Graham, and I am in fifth grade. I go to downtown school, and I'm thinking about being a bioengineer.
Madam Chair, if I can ask at this time that our amazing students symbolically present to you and Board Vice Chair Skylar Mayberry Mays our signatures, so you come forward with those?
You can just grab them, and if you want to come on up. Thank you. Do you want to come up?
Yeah, let's have them all come up, and can we have a photographic moment? And anyone who's present here this evening, we would ask that you please come join us today as for this historic and photographic moment. Anyone, please feel free to join us. Don't be shy.
Come on, everybody. This is a team effort, so don't be shy.
Sorry.
Don't be shy.
Anybody behind, come up behind us.
You get behind us.
Come on in, come on in.
Come on, come on, all the way over here. Yeah, there you go. Don't be shy. Get in here. Come on. Come on, we need to be represented. Come on, come on, all the way over here.
I've got to... All right, bring it in.
Okay. Get in, get in a little close. There you go.
One, two, three. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, people. Thank you so much. Thanks. I see a read on there somewhere.
Yeah.
So, at this point, I am going to ask Board Member Dix to please introduce the resolution and motion to adopt.
Madam Chair, I move the board...
First, actually, are there any additional public speakers that we would like to be heard on this topic? Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Would you call their names, please?
Yes. First up, I'd like to call Julie Powell Moore. If you can please approach the podium.
I'm Julie Powell Moore. I represent the Public Schools Strong group that's here en masse, and I took part in gathering signatures for the bond issue, and this is going to make me have tears. As I talked with people about the bond issue and the proposal, they were really moved by the stories, the story of the passing of that bond issue, and they said, this is something we can do for our kids, and they really, they were really behind it. So, many of them talked about this being an alternative to the voucher movement, and they talked about the availability of the programs, the STEM program, the trades program, the performing arts program, and they said, those are things that the public school will be accountable for, and the vouchers will not. And so, they were, they were, they said, this is something we can do for our kids, and thank you for, for the work that you've done to bring this about. I shared the story of the meeting that I attended, the last meeting that I attended, and how moving it was, and I didn't have 257 signatures. Not one person said no. Not one person said no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'd like to call Sherri Mortis.
Hello, board. My name is Sherri Mortis. I live on the east side, and I'm also a member of Des Moines Public Schools Strong. And I'd like to sort of present my statements around making a clarion call to the community in response to the proposed Reimagine referendum. I'd like to start by saying to people who might be watching and listening today, hopefully, parents, guardians, grandparents, aunts and uncles, people in our surrounding neighborhoods and communities. So, this really includes all of us, who understand how important it is to be invested in our neighborhoods and invested in the success of every school in our district. This is a very exciting time, I think, for Des Moines Public Schools. There's a lot at stake with the Reimagine bond issue, bond referendum, because it will create learning spaces for students that will be inspiring in a way that can provide an acquisition of skills and knowledge that can propel them into the next stages of their journey and provide instructional staff with a means to do that. And just as important, it can enhance the sustainability of our neighborhoods by making sure that schools are functioning as a good lynchpin that keeps neighbors in place and attracts new ones along the way. We want to attract families to Des Moines, and we want our schools to continue to be huge assets to our neighborhoods. Our Des Moines Public Schools Strong members have been having good conversations with each other and with people throughout the Des Moines community. People are excited about the possibilities that Reimagine holds for our neighborhood schools. They are happy that this district coordinated a team to lay out a blueprint and adopt programs that will give each student more choices and more opportunities to explore areas of interest. It can have a positive impact on the quality of the educational experience of every student and the ability of every student to be prepared for the next step in their educational journey. And for high school graduates, that includes important decisions for their next step in life. Reimagine can launch our students and schools forward into the 21st century with schools designed to build skills and new technologies and platforms of information that creates schools and instruction that inspire leadership, critical thinking, cross-cultural experiences, and emotional social growth. Our public school community has faced challenges before, and we have come through them with wide community alliances and support. And finally, our students deserve this, our teachers, support staff, and administrators deserve this, and our neighborhoods deserve this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers that I have signed up.
Thank you so much. At this point, Mr. Dix, please introduce the resolution.
Madam Chair, I move the board adopt the resolution, calling for the election on the issuance of $265 million in general obligation bonds.
May I have a second?
Alonso, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dix and a second by Ms. Alonso. Is there any discussions or questions? So, at this point, I'm going to read a statement on behalf of the board. Dr. Roberts and I were reflecting that two years ago, this very big, bold, ambitious vision was put forth. As a board, we rethought our vision and our mission. The staff put forth a strategic plan, and all of those things came together and put us in the driver's seat to put forth a world-class education for our district. And there is a lot of gratitude that should go around. The staff was heroic in revising plans and getting feedback. The community showed up for a lot of public sessions and provided feedback, and I think it's really important that we call out their sacrifice of time and energy. So, I actually want to ask for a round of applause for all of the people that worked on this plan. I also think it's important to remind everybody that we crossed a first hurdle, and that was getting this community to step up and support this plan. We still have to actually vote and get it approved in November, and so, part of what I'm asking all of you to do and we're asking you to do is to spread the word, to keep telling the great stories about Des Moines Public Schools, to tell about how this facility plan, this reimagining education, is going to increase access for student learning experiences. So, please, number one, do that. There are a couple of other things, just because there's so much energy that I think the board would love to call out. Number one, we would like to ask you to embrace the 30,000 students and the 5,000 staff as your own and do everything you can to cheerlead them and champion them at any point that you can, because they are very special to us. The second thing is volunteer. We have worked through some kinks, and we are welcoming volunteers, and so, please go to our website and consider volunteering and supporting our young people. And a very good way that you can also help DNPS is to advocate for a very important legislative priority, which is pre-K. We talk about pre-K a lot, but we know that it has a very strong impact on literacy results. And so, that's why you hear "pre-K" talked about in this plan. That's why you'll see all of us up at the Capitol advocating for pre-K. And finally, I think what we want to do is end by saying, Dr. Roberts, thank you. You came here, and right away, we put you to work and worked together to put together this really big vision, and so, we appreciate you and your bold leadership in getting there out in this community and getting this done. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly want to express that gratitude to just some of amazing, amazing teammates who are an integral part of this work over the last two years. I will continue to do so. So, thank you, Madam Chair and board.
Great. So, with that, board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Woo! Next, we do have to take action on the board's own resolution to support the November 4, 2025, general obligation bond referendum. May I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that the board adopt a resolution supporting the November 4, 2025, general obligation bond referendum.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano. May I have a second?
Campos, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Ms. Campos. Are there any discussion or questions? With that, board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero, and this resolution is adopted. Woo! So, with that, we are going to move forward to our public forum. You're just double checking with the boss. Thank you, everybody. I know some of you may drop off, so we just want to extend our appreciation to the families and young people who came. We really appreciate you being here so much, so thank you. Next on the agenda is the public forum. Am I... Who's got the consent?
Ms. Knox.
Ms. Knox.
Okay. It's under your... Got it. Next on the agenda is the public forum. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda and up to five minutes for an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of this business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dmschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called individually, and we ask that they state their name and city prior to providing comments. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to the programs, services, and operations of DNPS. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public forum speakers, as it is our obligation to discuss only matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers for the public forum?
Yes, we do. First up, I'd like to call Julianne Van Lu. The podium. Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I've had a brief conversation with this, with the chair, about this with the chairwoman and with some staff, but my name is Julianne Van Lu. I'm the director of the Polk County Health Department and also an incredibly proud mom of a two-week-old kindergartner in the Des Moines Public School system who's having the time of her life. I'm not kidding you. I also need to briefly just commend the presence of the focus on pre-K in the work you're doing. If there's, you know, a top 10 or 15 public health policies that can long-term impact public health, it's actually pre-K, and so, just wild about that. But I'm here real quickly just to put something on your radar and give you a little bit of context so that you're aware of something important to our community as a board. There's something called the Iowa Youth Survey that's conducted by the Iowa Health and Human Services Department. It's a survey conducted of sixth, eighth, and eleventh graders. You have participated historically in some years, but not others, and this year, you have not yet opted to participate, although you still have time to do so. I'm here because some of the information on that survey is the only public health information I have for kiddos on that topic. So, there's really key, and I actually have here, I'd like to pass around, the actual surveys are in there, so you can see the questions, but they're asking key questions around food and housing access, mental health and bullying, feelings and perception of safety, access and experiences with alcohol and tobacco, all sorts of information that we as a health department and our partners need in order to best use our resources for the most pressing, concerning health issues facing our youth right now. I'll be honest, right now, I'm using 2019, 2020 data, and I'm feeling out of touch, and I'm not sure how many kiddos, for example, are taking part in vaping, and that's something we really need to know to understand, to figure out how we create county-wide response, right? So, this is a survey that would be conducted by HHS in coordination with your school district. All responses would be completely anonymous, no student names, no addresses, anything, just their responses on their experiences and what they're going through. This would, of course, require parental consent, and so, that is a major bureaucratic barrier I completely understand and something hard to navigate, but truly, I cannot overstate the value. I have access to vital statistics, and I can tell you how many kiddos are dying by suicide. I do not have access to data to help me understand how many are progressing along that mental illness journey, at what stage, and in what pockets of our community, right? So, in order to work truly upstream and preventive, I'm asking you to help us try to survey our youth so we can take that data and work with it. There's also the opportunity, if you lean into this survey, to get your data not only at the school district level, but to work with the state to get it at the school level, to really work one-on-one with staff, to create and tailor any sort of social and emotional support response systems to what you're seeing in any particular building.
Thirty seconds remaining.
That's my spiel for you. Again, I am working with staff and trying to find the right folks, but this has become a political survey in some areas in our state, and I want it to be really clear and transparent and make sure you all know why this helps bring value to all of us as a community and helps us do our job in supporting you as educators. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sean Voschel.
Hello. So, my name is Sean Voschel. I am a social studies teacher next door to Central Academy, and I am a proud DMEA member and a proud Public Schools Strong member. And first of all, I want to thank you all for your support for public education. I've met a couple of you at parent-teacher conferences, and, and I'm really grateful that you've entrusted me and my colleagues with the education of your children and grateful for your service on this board. So, I am here tonight to speak in support of a resolution that Public Schools Strong is introducing tonight, asking the board to resolve to support a 5% increase in allowable growth for public school education. This is in line with what the Iowa State Education Association is asking for in the upcoming legislative session, and we here at Public Schools Strong are also asking for this. And the resolution is also calling for the board to support revisions to the voucher law with the eventual goal of repealing it. So, I feel that as an educator and you as school board members have an obligation to speak up on issues of vital importance to public education in this state, and most Iowans, most residents of Des Moines support public dollars for public education and support properly funding public education, and so, I feel that this resolution is perfectly in line with, with your duty to your constituents. Our obligation is to speak against a system that tries to restrict access to an equitable education for all Iowans. And I, as a teacher, the first thing I try to teach my students is that the reason we study social studies is to try to answer the question, how should we live together with each other? And I think public education is the institution best placed in society to help students learn how to, how they want to answer that question, to debate that question, to discuss that question. This is something that private schools can't do in the same way that public schools can. I decided to become a social studies teacher to encourage students to become active citizens and...
Thirty seconds remaining.
Active participants in society, and so, that would be another reason why I'm speaking in support of this resolution. Lastly, the Des Moines Public Schools' vision statement calls on us to inspire every DNPS student to leave a lasting impact on our community and world, and I feel that this resolution represents a first step in living up to that vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next up, I'd like to call the Barline family, Joy, Luke, and Logan.
Hi. Good evening, members of the board. Hey, come here. Hang on a sec. My name is Joy Barline, and my zip code is 50312. I am the parent of Luke and Logan, who both receive special education services in this district. Right now, my boys are not in school and have been unable to attend this school year. They are home because the district has scheduled them in unsafe and inappropriate placements that do not follow their IEPs, do not provide the support they need, and completely separate them from their grade-level peers. Both Luke and Logan have a history of school-based trauma. Because of this, consistency, trusted staff, and peer relationships are critical for them. It is my boys who desire to continue their education with their friends they have grown up with. They miss school, they miss their friends, and they want to be back in school.
I decided to become a social studies teacher to encourage students to become active citizens and
Thirty seconds remaining.
Active participants in society, and so that would be another reason why I'm speaking in support of this resolution. Lastly, the Des Moines Public Schools' vision statement calls on us to inspire every DMPS student to leave a lasting impact on our community and world, and I feel that this resolution represents a first step in living up to that vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to call the Barline family, Joy, Luke, and Logan.
Good evening, members of the board. Hey, come here. Hang on a sec. My name is Joy Barline and my ZIP code is 50312. I am the parent of Luke and Logan, who both received special education services in this district. Right now, my boys are not in school and have been unable to attend this school year. They are home because the district has scheduled them in unsafe and inappropriate placements that do not follow their IEPs, do not provide the support they need, and completely separate them from their grade-level peers. Both Luke and Logan have a history of school-based trauma. Because of this, consistency, trusted staff, and peer relationships are critical for them. It is my boys who desire to continue their education with their friends they have grown up with. They miss school, they miss their friends, and they want to be back in school. Last year did not go well, and their placement was changed partway through the school year, but even then, they still had access to their peers in grade-level applied core classes like PE and Health and Art at lunch and during advisory. Those were the only general education times they had left with their classmates, and they were essentially essential for keeping them connected to school. This year, the district has scheduled them into off-grade-level applied core classes, lunch and advisory. They would not even have one minute during the school day with their own classmates, the friends they've grown up with and built relationships with for years. Every other seventh grader in our district gets to eat lunch with their peers and attend advisory with their classmates and are in seventh-grade applied core classes, but my children have been told they cannot. And the reason for this are because the special education classrooms must run on a single schedule and because teachers need their lunch and planning time. I agree that teachers need their lunch and planning time, but that should never come at the expense of my children's education, friendships, and safety. No other child in this district is told they have to be in a different grade level because of teacher needs. And my family is not alone. Too often, students with disabilities across this district are being denied meaningful inclusion, segregated from their peers, and denied FAP, a Free Appropriate Public Education. IDEA requires that children with disabilities be educated with non-disabled peers to the maximum extent appropriate. That is not happening here. I've tried to advocate. I have raised these concerns in IEP meetings. I've tried to get leadership involved, all to no avail. No one seems to care, and I'm left trying to explain to my boys why they are not in school. They have asked for meetings themselves. They want to advocate for themselves because they want to be back at school with their friends. So Luke and Logan are both here. Luke is going to speak next, and I will help clarify his speech. Thank you for hearing us today.
Thank you. Luke, you can go.
My name is Duke. My name is Duke, is D-U-C-E.
My name is Joy Barline. Yep. Go ahead.
I'm my attitude, want to do so, miss my dreams, miss my world, my dreams, want be to with my dreams and my glasses and my nose and want to tissues and know me, help me, please help me, go back to so, teach me, please, what's the moon? Want to know.
Good job. All right, Logan is next.
Go ahead, Logan.
I may know them mean, there's no them mean, I'm sad, but sad, but soon I want to go to soon, I miss my dreams, I want to be with my dreams in class and I want, I want teachers, well, who, know me and help me, help please, help me, give a to so, but teach me, help please, I want to, I don't.
You want to say thank you?
Diana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'd like to call Colin Coulter.
My name is Colin Coulter. I live in the 50317 over on Garfield by Stowe. I will be talking a little bit about reimagining education, so I'd like four instead of three minutes to split the difference if I could, since there's a little bit about that, but I will do my best to stay at three. I'm here today to talk to you about class sizes and staffing. I care about class sizes and staffing as a teacher, as a parent, and as a taxpayer. If I could speak to the public for a second, anytime we talk about class sizes, you're going to hear about money buckets. You're always going to be hearing about money buckets. The idea is that the money for faculty comes from this bucket, and the money for everything else comes from this bucket, and we just can't mix the buckets. All I'm going to say about money buckets is it's an excuse that I no longer want to hear. The second thing you'll hear in discussions about class size is a guy named Hattie. Hattie did research in a book called Visible Learning where he claimed that class size doesn't matter. It's gained a lot of traction in districts like this where class size is nearly an intractable issue, but there's serious issues with this research. Meta-analysis was a poor format, the experimental conditions weren't really correct, they're studying direct instruction, we don't do that anymore. But all you really had to do to know that class size mattered was ask a teacher. The notion that class size doesn't matter is ridiculous for many reasons. My workload and stress levels are largely determined by the number of classes I teach and the number of students on my roster. It seems crazy to say this, but if I have twice as many students, it takes twice as long to grade student work. As class sizes increase, the class time spent on student misbehavior, contacts home, point sheets, and many other tasks piles up, and soon, I'm missing important tasks for families because my class rosters are over 150 students. The number of relationships that I need to build with class sizes increases too. All of these district initiatives depend on class size, and my inability to meet the insane demands on my contract hours destroys my feeling of self-efficacy in the classroom. More importantly, large class sizes are an injustice to the student. None of you would tolerate sitting in a room elbow-to-elbow, sweat-to-sweat with 38 other people and try to do work for hours every day. Yet you force East students into this condition every single day. What's really cruel is that these class sizes drive dropouts. When a new teacher arrives at East, they inevitably see class sizes of 35 to 40 students, and they start to panic. And when they go ask another teacher, is this an error? Is this a screw-up? We have to tell them, no, it's not, but you don't need to worry because 10 of these kids will stop showing up, a position I have heard from former members of this district faculty, district management. It's you who set these conditions. Class sizes matter for board goals too. I see in reimagining education, we have a goal to have open enrollment into the district, be open enrollment out of the district. I know that my East Side neighbors open enroll out of the district because they have a perception of large, unmanageable classrooms. Speaking of reimagining education, the plan for East Side schools is two 6,000-square-foot 3D-printing rooms for the middle schools and 12 career technical education classrooms for East High. To be frank, I do not believe that you have the ability or the will to staff these classrooms. What good to the East Side is 12 empty classrooms with decaying equipment that goes unused? Never mind that East Siders want a well-rounded liberal arts education for their children even if they can't articulate it. Never mind that we don't need to be pigeonholed into roles as tradespeople. Never mind that East is large enough and hard enough to navigate already? I don't believe that you will put faculty into any of the rooms that you're asking money to build. East Siders won't be upside down on our car payments, we're going to be upside down on our CTE rooms. So, since I don't believe that this board or C-suite will look at any KPIs or metrics on their performance evaluations, I'm going to change my asks. Until I can complete the asks that you have for me in my grading and lesson planning during my 8:00 to 3:45 contract hours, I'm going to ask my fellow teachers to work to rule, leave your work at work, and stop working at 3:45. I'm going to ask my fellow East Siders to vote no on the bond referendum because we don't need to fund VR golf simulators for Roosevelt while our classrooms sit empty. And to the citizens of Des Moines, I say, vote the incumbents out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'd like to call Mary Ann Koch.
Well, thank you. My name is Mary Ann Koch. I live on Woodland Avenue, and my ZIP code is 50312. I know that I am only one citizen in this state and in this school district, in this city, but I am one person, and I do have my opinions and my support to give to you. You have a very difficult job ahead of you. I've been a teacher, not in Des Moines here, but I've been a teacher in my career, and I know the stress that there is with that, in meeting the needs of all of the students that we get. But I am a citizen now here in Des Moines. I do have rights, and I know that I have responsibilities that go with that. As a citizen, likewise, all of our children who live in this state deserve an education. They deserve to have their needs met. I know that you know that, and I know that you work for that, but I am just stating, I guess, the obvious there for all of us. These young people have needs that are very diverse, but the quality of public education is to fulfill those needs, and this is our responsibility. Our responsibility is to support you with what you need, and there are many needs there. As a member of Public Schools Strong, we are going to be continuing to advocate for you and for the things that you need. Among those things are, let me start over with that, excuse me. I fully believe that you have that desire and that intention of offering a quality education to all of our students. However, how can you do that if you are not given the funding to do that? I know that's a huge thing, and without that funding, the teachers can't be hired, the support staff, all of that is difficult. So, we are offering, coming forward this evening, asking for support and putting our support behind you getting a 5% increase in your funding annually. We see that a lot of that money, or we feel that a lot of that money, is squandered on vouchers, which belong to the public schools. And so that is another thing that we wish, and we hope that we can help move away from the way things are happening. So I want you to know that all of your efforts and your intentions are really supported by many more people than those who have signed all the petitions for Public Schools Strong, the ones that we are going to bring forward to you too, even though we know that there are many problems that our students and teachers have. So, thank you to all of you for what you do do. We will continue to do what we can to support you going forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marshall James. And just to confirm, you are the last speaker.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Hello, board. My name is Marshall James. I'm a community organizer with Iowa Citizen for Community Improvement on our Public Schools Strong campaign. I'm also the president of the North of Grand Neighborhood Organization and a parent to a three-year-old who just began his Des Moines Public Schools journey two weeks ago. From 1999 to 2008, the United States Mint released a series of commemorative quarters featuring designs for each state in the Union, and Iowa's entry into this popular series did not feature corn or livestock, that was chosen by Wisconsin, nor covered bridges, nor a state bird, or a flower, as so many other states chose. No, Iowa selected for its symbol a schoolhouse and a scene of a teacher planting a tree with her students. The rendering references Arbor Day, a piece by the renowned Iowa artist Grant Wood of American Gothic fame. Under the state name are inscribed the words "Foundation in Education." This sentiment is a worthy one. For decades, Iowa was a national leader in public education, a point of pride felt by Iowans of all stripes. A variety of factors contributed to this, not the least of which was funding. For most of Iowa's existence, fully funding public education was a nonpartisan mainline Iowa value. However, in the past three decades, funding for Iowa schools has been consistently reduced. Consequently, Iowa's national rankings in public education have slipped dramatically. Where once the state was allocating double-digit annual funding increases, today, the state supplemental aid hovers around 2%, meaning that it is entirely consumed by the higher rate of inflation. At the same time, the ESA voucher program is siphoning hundreds of millions of dollars away from public schools and is already far outpacing the projected estimated cost to taxpayers. In consideration of these factors, I am honored to present the following letter. Dear members of Des Moines Public School Board, on behalf of the Public Schools Strong and Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement, we are submitting over 500 local signatures in support of the enclosed resolution urging the governor of Iowa and the state legislature to fully fund public schools by a minimum annual 5% increase to the state supplemental aid adjusted for inflation, to maintain the income cap for the ESAs, to phase out the ESA voucher program over the next five years, and to use public funds only for public schools. We respectfully request that this resolution be added to the school board agenda for the Tuesday, October 21st meeting in accordance with Iowa Code Section 279.8B, and we encourage you to discuss, support, and vote to pass this resolution. At Iowa CCI, we believe that every child, no matter what ZIP code, identity, background, race, gender, or ability, has the right to a high-quality public education. That means fully funding our public schools, urban and rural alike. We know how great our public schools were, are, and could be again, and how critical they are to our community's future generations. This is why we firmly believe that we must use our public funds for public schools. Thank you for serving on the school board. Please note that you have the community's support to raise your voice and pass this resolution.
Those are all the speakers that I have. Madam Chair, I can hand to Patrick. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our Goal Three monitoring report. And with this, Dr. Roberts, I will turn it to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we continue to sort of partner with all of our stakeholders, certainly leaders, teachers, and staff, and the board to just maintain this relentless focus on student outcomes, today we will monitor for the very first time Goal Three. I'm going to ask, I believe, before we jump right in, as is customary, we want to make sure that those teammates who are working in school buildings, who are closest to the work, provides sort of a perspective and some visibility into some of what they're doing. I believe today we have Associate Principal Morgan Schoenberg and some other members of the Husky team, Hoover Huskies,
Woo!
To share a little bit about their work and experiences.
Good evening, DMPS. I'm Morgan Schoenberg, Associate Principal at Hoover High School, and I'm here with my ninth-grade success team leads. We are just a mere representation of the hard work and the rest of our team members. So at Hoover High School, our ninth-grade team has really embraced the collaborative and student-centered approach to supporting our incoming freshmen. Beginning three years ago in the spring, a dedicated group of educators began aligning expectations for our ninth-grade students, laying the foundation for a purposeful and unified team structure. What started out as planning for one event, a transition from middle school to high school, expanded into a year-round, laser-focused, all-encompassing movement on our ninth-grade students. Our team aligned with a shared purpose to equip students with executive functioning skills, the things that we hate to admit that we are maybe not great at, communication, time management, organization, but we always want better for our students than what we have, knowing that our students need to be taught and reinforced with these to be successful in high school and afterwards. Last school year, our team met biweekly after school to reflect on student needs, our implemented policies and practices, things that we could do better. We worked to align our policies to achieve desired outcomes. We wanted students to pass their core classes, all of their classes, skill-building and executive functioning skills. We placed an emphasis on our SEL curriculum wayfinder and directed study, and our common expectations, really emphasizing fostering really strong relationships with our students. These efforts led to a 20 percentage point increase in our ninth-grade on-track readiness as measured by our Des Moines Public Schools metrics. This summer, our staff took even more steps forward. They gathered frequently, dreamed big, planned intentionally, and now, during the school day, thanks to a comprehensive scheduling miracle, we meet three times a week during the day and then twice a week in our content PLCs. Our team successfully organized a two-day orientation for our incoming ninth graders focused on community building, communicating our expectations, and familiarizing our students with the Husky Way. Now, we all know it's pretty hard to get adults to agree on anything. We have a room of about 17 passionate staff members agreeing on an entire experience for our ninth-grade students, so it's pretty magical in there. Students now benefit from consistent expectations around staff language, school supplies, locker use, organization of school materials, daily procedures, entry and exit routines in class, which all seem really small in isolation, but with consistency and purposeful effort to raise our expectations and provide an opportunity to elevate the whole child. We are building a culture of ninth-grade readiness. We are reducing silos, increasing collaboration, strengthening partnerships with families. Our team includes core and extended core teachers, instructional specialists, gear up personnel, academic interventionists, counselors, instructional coaches at our advanced learning placement coordinator, and our Hoover administration. The platform of collaboration between schools with our ninth-grade on-track initiative has really helped elevate the responsiveness and the importance of has really helped elevate the responsiveness and the importance of success in the first year of high school. So we are humbled to share this work with the board and community and grateful for the opportunity to celebrate the beginning of what we believe will be lasting success for our students. The work being done at Hoover is driven by, like I said before, a group of very passionate staff members, which is crucial in reaching all ninth-grade students. Our goal is to ease the transition to high school, support the growth of our students with high expectations, and propel them for success in high school and afterwards. And this team that we are representing is working tirelessly to answer that call. So, I don't know if you have any questions, but before that, we have a little call-and-response that we do at some of our meetings, so we're just gonna let the vibes come, right? We're here celebrating some good things. So I'm gonna say, "Oh, let's do it," and everybody in the room is gonna say, "Ayy!" and do a little dance, all right? All right, good things, right? Oh, let's do it, ayy! And I hope everybody saw that on TV, on Facebook.
Well, I mean, I think, I guess, what would be one behavior that you feel with the two-day orientation has been mastered far quicker than maybe if you didn't have something like that?
I think familiarity in the relationship building. We could have students already identify people that they, as the kids say, vibed with, so they could scope out. We had so many of our teachers and staff members at orientation with our students. So that relationship, building that foundation, building that trust, and being able to leverage those relationships later on is really gonna be useful for us.
Just one other follow-up. I guess Hoover's gotten so much great attention around your work with cell phones. How do you, how does that get woven into the orientation, if at all?
Yeah, we use that to really communicate our expectations hammer at home. There is a policy, there are policies all over, but we are very clear in how we are communicating with students about the expectations for our cell phones.
Great. Board members?
We hear good things about the students.
And joining that, how is the feedback that you're getting from the families?
For the ninth-grade team? I mean, our families are pretty responsive. We've had quite a few family meetings already. We are able to address things a lot more quickly. So we're looking at patterns with our sign-in and sign-out sheets, like who's going to the bathroom too often? And what can we do, what are those barriers getting in the way of education? How can we serve our children and get to the root cause of maybe some behaviors that aren't on the path to success? So we've had a lot of success partnering with families.
Just want to extend my gratitude for you and your team for really looking at the areas that we need to improve and taking the bull by the horns and identifying ways that you can overcome those barriers on behalf of the students that we serve. So, thank you. We know there's lots of data and research to show how difficult this transition is for our students, and you are creating a space where some of that transition and some of that anxiety and some of that unknown has been removed. So, thank you.
You talked a lot about and said over and over just magic words to my ears, and that's raised expectations.
Yes.
How has that gone over with the adults in the building as well? Certainly, we have students who have to have raised expectations, and then we have to help them meet those expectations, but what about the adults and how has that gone with the staff? Because this is different for them too.
Yeah, I think we are, we were very intentional in building this ninth-grade team who would support our ninth graders. We, it's been three years in the making, so this isn't new. People knew we had some time to grow into these. So I would say our team is on board. We know that the work is very important, and we try to remain student-centered in what we do. It might be uncomfortable for us, but it's what's best for students.
Thank you.
Morgan, thank you and the team for all that you've done at Hoover. One of the things you mentioned is that you feel like part of this works particularly well because you miraculously found time in the day to get together three times. I'm curious, any advice you would have for other schools that maybe don't have it as easy to find that time during the day? Maybe what are some of the other passive ways that they could see some similar types of results?
I think other high schools are meeting within their teams. We are very fortunate to have a great master scheduler or comprehensive scheduler and the support of the district to accomplish this. I don't think it'd be feasible in most places, but it is at Hoover, so we're gonna capitalize on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you, Team Husky. Thank you.
I actually have one question.
Maria?
Thank you.
We're back.
I'm just wondering, what challenges do you see? It sounds like you're excelling, you're doing great work. Do you have any challenges that concern you? And how can the board help?
Well, we are short some radio team staff members right now, so if we could get those background checks cleared with HR, that would be great. We are down in RSC and two campus monitors, and I think we would, our admin team would, and instructional coaches, we would be able to flourish and thrive and focus on instruction if we could get those staff members in our building.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good answer.
Madam Chair, thank you again. So we are going to, for the first time, monitor while Kyle sort of highlights for us Goal Three, the PowerPoint deck that I want to walk through very quickly, but I want to just bring to your attention that this Goal Three work really aligns very strongly to our strategic priority number one, which is cultivating high-quality teaching and learning. And also, it really aligns to our strategic objective number one, which is ensuring that every single student graduates with the competencies to pursue college, career, and the military. I also wanna, I'm doing some sort of background layering because the work that is being done, and the board has pushed us to get towards Goal Three, really connects to an anchor that I see serves two purposes, dual purposes. One, it's our diploma-plus pursuit, right? And it serves the purpose of just anchoring how we look at, instead of starting this work at ninth grade to get towards a 12th grade outcome, it's a pre-K-12 sort of area of focus. And then the second, it's our North Star, because ultimately, when students walk across the stage from Des Moines Public Schools based on our strategic plan and strategic objectives and actions, they will graduate ready to pursue any of their choices among the three Es, which is to enroll in a college or university of their choice, enlist in any branch of the military, or to truly be gainfully employed. And so the work that is happening right now, truly, while this is the very first monitoring report here, I'm excited by the work from district-level staff. I know we have Tasha Brung, who's leading the district-wide push. We have our CAO, Rob Landin. Chris White is doing amazing work with our ninth-grade on-track work that I'll talk a little bit about, just to layer this for you. And of course, Josie Sturgess and team are just doing incredible work, supporting, providing with data, and leading some of our key conversations. In 2000, and you'll hear this a little bit more in the presentation, 2007, and I had the opportunity to see and read about this work even in other districts. The University of Chicago with a consortium of school research, they looked at and produced really groundbreaking research. And essentially, what they found is, because some of the highest dropout rates for students is usually between that transition from eighth to ninth, or when they are in their ninth-grade year, and what they found, if students who were able to earn credits to get to the 10th grade, having only failed no more than one course, are more than likely going to graduate from high school on time. And it's for that very reason with the board's push, we have sort of really reallocated resources and are putting a lot of effort into what we call in our N-G-O-T. Anyone knows what that is? You know, we love to use acronyms. Look at the board, wow! That's what I'm talking about. So the ninth-grade on-track work is really getting us some traction. And as you'll see, I'll jump right into the PowerPoint slide, and I'll go through this at a high level, and certainly feel free to ask any questions. Again, the goal is for a percentage of grade 12 students earning a diploma plus, and remember the plus is, an industry-recognized certificate in four years of high school will increase from 38.2% in the spring of 2024. Last spring is where we started to monitor this work, to 63.5% in the spring of 2030. And the next slide, we really highlight for you just where we are and how we're doing with regards to not just the goal, but our interim goals 3A, 3B, and 3C. You will note that interim goals 3A and 3B, we are, 3A, sorry, we are exceeding the target. 3B and 3C, because we don't yet have targets in this report, haven't, we do not have enough data yet, and we will by the spring of '26, then as we continue to monitor this goal, we'll then be able to look at each of the three interims. But right now, we want to sort of celebrate because we are exceeding the target, which means that we are getting positive traction, right? We're certainly far from what we've aspired or set out to do, but the traction that we're getting here, looking at the percentage of ninth-grade students meeting the ninth-grade on-track metric, which is earning, again, those five credits that I referenced earlier, and failing no more than one class, excited about this. And the trend shows that we are increasing in terms of accomplishing what we set out to do. On the next slide, this provides you at a high level sort of some key takeaways, right? Diploma Plus is really a starting point. The spring 2025 data really shows us that there is a slight uptick from what we've projected, which is always a good and encouraging place for us to be. The ninth-grade on-track spring 25 performance, last year, ninth graders really showed meaningful progress in achieving on-track standards from the prior year. And the work that is happening with our ninth graders is not just, thank you, based on just academic input or academic outcomes of some students. There certainly is a really robust kind of professional and communities. We are teachers who are a part of this consortium in each of our high schools. They're spending a lot of time on intellectual preparation to make sure that they can deliver in strong pedagogical practices. The MAP, the third bullet point is MAP, Geometry and ELA Data Presented for Informational Purposes Only, and the reason is, a MAP, which is a measure of academic progress, an assessment that is one of the strongest predictors of most of our standardized assessments around the country. More than 9,000 districts around the country utilizes a MAP assessment. The MAP assessment is a tool that we are utilizing and certainly is used by a lot of high-performance districts around the country, because the MAP really allows teachers and school leaders to have access to very granular data that then informs how teachers can sort of go about reteaching when they are recognizing and identifying gaps in where students are. I'll go to the next slide. What's next? Continued New Actions to 2025, 2026. Certainly, there are some key pieces I want to highlight. First is for us to continue the guidance of students around how to make strategic course activity choices under the auspices of Diploma Plus. And this is where we have our coaches that are spending a lot of time with students. Again, there are so many intersections between the work that is happening with the pursuit of Diploma Plus, ensure that we're now building and cultivating a robust system that is no longer ninth through 12, but pre-K through 12, and how we're using our advisement sessions to ensure that students are receiving exactly what they need in order for them to be successful. I'll go to one more slide as we think about, again, the work that has to continue. Continuing observations and data collection under ninth-grade on-track implementation. While we're celebrating, because we are exceeding the target, we know that we do not yet have a very, very strong or robust dataset. We probably need a few more marking periods in order for us to sort of come back to the board and to provide you with guidance about where we are. And finally, this is our continued integration of ICAP content into future pathways and these advisement sessions that are future-ready coaches, a group of individuals who we were, because of our financially constrained environment, almost lost, but with some advocacy from some of our district leaders, we were able to keep those, and they are critical to the work moving forward. I'll stop there certainly, and I'll ask Kyle if I may to highlight the report, the report, if he has that, with the line graph, so you can get some visibility into what that looks like.
While Kyle is doing that, Dr. Roberts, this particular report nor the PowerPoint are available on Board Docs. Can we make sure that those get updated for our community and for the board to have access to? I know that we received printed copies today, but I will say, I don't feel fully prepared to have this conversation without having had these in advance of the meeting.
Well, Madam Chair, I certainly sincerely apologize, and we will make sure, I'll work at Rosie to make sure we have that available. And if it pleases the board, because we are truly enthused about just not only having this goal in place with the board's guidance, but having created these interims, I would love to come back if necessary at some point and revisit this discussion so it can be much more healthy and more robust, if it pleases the board.
I think, I think that would actually be very good, because I think we're all maybe in that boat.
Okay.
But two questions on that. The item that's on the information-only number-three update on guardrail three interims, is that different, or is that part of this conversation on the board agenda?
Guardrail three?
Oh, thank you.
Very different. Yes, ma'am.
Very different, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Then, the real question, though, is, I think I missed the future-ready coach piece. Can you, did we, we retain the future-ready coaches?
We did retain the future-ready coaches. One of the advocates, and she spent a lot of time, Tasha Brung, is in the back of the room. You all know that her voice is very dominant here. Yes, we were able to retain them, and even as we move forward, we need to be thoughtful about how we can budget and reallocate resources, because they're such an integral part of this work. If we are going to truly achieve this goal by 2030 of having 100% of our students walk across the stage with a Diploma Plus, having that support of future-ready coaches will be critical, so.
And so how did we, we didn't, because it was grant-funded last time, and we didn't have the grant, how did we fund it this year?
Yeah, so I'll share that our Department of Education partners, or GEAR Up grant, I think, was a critical part of that funding, and so we're gonna continue to have those conversations. But at some point, we need to think about, in terms of general funds, what is possible.
But who's funding it for this fiscal year?
It's a combination of the GEAR Up grant, and I believe some is coming from Des Moines Public Schools. Looking for head nods? Or not?
That's why we didn't.
No. Let's confirm, Tasha Brown. GEAR Up grant only?
Funded for four years.
And funded for four years. GEAR Up grant. Thank you, ma'am.
So, based on this, board members, do we want to digest this and then potentially put it on consent next agenda and then pull it off if we want to discuss it? Or do we want to just have it as a separate agenda item at the next board meeting? Let me just look for some feedback from my board colleagues.
I'm okay with that plan. I just want to be sure that the public has, if we are going to, as a board, ask our questions to Dr. Roberts in between now and the next meeting, that those questions and answers are published with that consent agenda item so that the public is aware of all the questions that were asked and all the responses as a part of our inquiry into this work.
Okay. And we'll see how the questioning goes and make that determination as to whether or not it's a standalone item or it goes on consent.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So certainly, that works for us. Certainly, we want to make sure we continue to communicate out and share not only our monitoring reports, but also to share and receive questions from the board ahead of time as planned, so that we can certainly have a solid discussion at the board table. So thank you.
Great. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, do we need to officially table this item?
Yes, let's do that.
I move to table item D1, Goal Three, until our next meeting.
We have a motion by Ms. Marderano. May I have a second?
Dick's second.
We have a motion by Ms. Marderano and a second by Mr. Dix. Any discussion or questions? I will say, board members, please make sure you submit your questions ahead of time and so you see board leadership, so we can make sure to package them together. Okay, board members, please cast your votes. So the vote to table this until next board meeting is approved, seven to zero. And with that, we will move to consent items. Jen, do you have the consent motion?
Oh, is this still me?
Mm-hmm.
I do have the consent motion.
And I can, if you want first?
Is this the consent items?
Yep. As a reminder to the board and public, we, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with the speaker.
With the speaker regarding comments made to agenda items, discussion and deliberation will remain among the board members at the board table with speakers, comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Oh, is this final? Ms. Knox, I believe you have the consent motion. Ms. Knox, I believe you have the consent motion.
I do. I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $8,413,180.10 in procurement card transactions in the amount of $554,771.41.
We have a motion by Ms. Knox. May I have a second?
Martorano, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Knox and a second by Ms. Martorano. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next, we have information-only items. Item one is the ISAS update. Item two is the PSYAC overview. Update number three is the update on guardrail-three interims. Dr. Roberts, did you wanna say anything about these, or do they stand as is?
Just information as is, Madam Chair.
Right. With that, we will move to other business. First item is G1 Personnel Recommendation. I will receive and file and take action. Dr. Roberts, would you like to introduce this matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board file, receive, file, and accept the notice to terminate the continuing teacher's contract.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Dick's so moved.
Martorano, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dix and a second by Ms. Martorano. Any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, seven to zero. Next, we move to items of privilege. Board members, I would like to ask if you have anything you would like to share.
Nobody ever wants to go first. I'll go first. It was, I just think this is a great evening and a first, I think, really well said. This is the first hurdle, but this was the easy part. Getting signatures, getting the plan together, and all the work that came for the last two years is the easy part. The next hard thing is the vote. And the even harder thing after that is then going to be to deliver on the vision that we've put forward, because that's gonna be the real challenge. So, it's great to celebrate tonight. It is, but I'm mindful of the fact that we've got some work to do over the next month to get this passed. If anyone has any questions or wants to engage on this, I think all of the board members, I won't speak for all of you, but I'll say for myself, that I am ready to answer questions and ready to engage on this, because I'm enthusiastic about this plan and where it's taking Des Moines Public Schools.
I second that.
And just, I'm gonna make sure, Amanda, I'm looking at you. I assume there'll be public forums and sessions that are gonna be announced if people wanna learn more about the bond. Those will be found on the website? Okay, great. So, for people that have questions, I just wanna encourage them to look out for some of these sessions where questions will be answered. Other items of privilege.
I do, I have a brief statement. On Friday, September 4th, a student was unfortunately struck walking home from school by a car at a crosswalk, but fortunately, the injuries sustained were minor. I would like to express my gratitude to the city and the district for their implementations of measures to enhance safety of our students as they walk home from school, including the expansion of the school zones, the installation of hawkeyes, and a numerous amount of high-traffic schools. The collaboration effort of the city and the school districts has undoubtedly made this incident less hazardous. With the 25 mile-an-hour speed zones and the cross signals, also the hawkeyes at the crosswalks were all up, are all working. This student involved in this incident diligently followed all safety protocols while walking home from school. I would like to remind drivers to refrain from using their cell phones and adhere to all traffic signals and remain vigilant of their surroundings in these school zones. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Campos.
So, I have three things. Lots of ways everyone can get involved. First, I wanna do a plug for the North High Booster Club. They are doing a very fun night out, a dueling piano night. It's November 8th, from 6:00 to 11:00 at the Shop DSM. I'm sure you can find more information on the Booster Club's social media. It looks like they're doing tickets online, on-bound. So, check it out. I think they're very affordable. I should look at the amount. But they're very affordable, will be a fun night, and a great way to support North High Booster Clubs and Athletics. And then I also wanna put in a couple plugs for the DMPS Foundation. First, we are just about one month away from the DMPS One Run. So, if you have not signed up to participate in the One Run, please go to the Des Moines Public Schools Foundation, dmpsfoundation.org, and get signed up. There's a link. We have some really great technology upgrades for this year's event. It's gonna be a wonderful community event, so please sign up, donate. Again, when you sign up, you get to select a school that you want your portion of the funds for attending to go to, so it's just a great way to help all of our schools. So, I hope everyone will be there. And then the second thing for all of the teachers and administrators out there is that our grant cycle has officially opened, and we are trying something a little different with the foundation this year, which is having cycles for applications for grants. But that is live on our webpage. Applications will be due October 3rd for this first cycle of grants. So, hop on again, dmpsfoundation.org. You can go to the tab that says Get Support, and there's details on applications and our funding priorities. And so, just, just please check it out and get an application in.
Thank you.
Really quick comment. I have the pleasure of working with recent high school graduates, early-age college students, every day, and I had an experience recently where there were a few students who were DMPS graduates, and they were talking to me about Des Moines Public Schools, because they saw all this stuff around reimagined education. So, we got into a conversation about what is reimagined education, and I'll tell you the sentiment and the emotion that I felt after by seeing those students was a sentiment of sadness. They seemed sad. And I said, "Well, you all seem very sad about this, what's going on?" And they said, "Why didn't you do this sooner?" And to me, that was validation that there is still hope, and our students still need this to move forward. But what excited me most is, they said, "Well, how do we help?" Well, the exciting thing is, in recognition of National Voter Registration Day, is that all of these students are now 18-years-old. So, I told them, "There is a population of 18-year-olds who are gonna be registering the vote, so that they, too, can be a part in this historical moment."
Thank you. That's great. They're people? I just, I wanna say thank you. Last week was a heavy week. There were some really adult topics that were covered as it relates to school shootings and political violence, and I wanna thank all of the adults. Teachers and staff are, find themselves in unique situations at times when you don't expect it, and so I just wanna say thank you, because the kids are watching you. And so, thank you for, for the behavior and navigating through some pretty tough stuff. With that, Dr. Roberts, I'm gonna turn it to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, good transition for my very brief remarks and responses, and that is, if there's one arena where, when everything else seems not to be going well in our world, where people maintain a level head, have a sense of stability, and truly bring hope and optimism to our society, our community, and our country, is in the pre-K-12 education space. And I have to tell you, I am incredibly proud of how our teachers, staff, and leaders have shown up and continue to show up in spite of what is happening around the country and around the world. And so, I wanna encourage you, when you see a teacher and educator in the community, just say thank you, because in spite of everything that is happening around us, they're the ones who are, continue to show up to inspire our students every single day. And so, even when I think about those of you who are sitting here at the board meeting, sitting in the front row, your relentless and ferocious support of public education continues to inspire us and encourages our heart. So, thank you for all that you do as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, with that, we are going to adjourn for the evening at, gosh, 6:49. And then, board, we're gonna take a brief break. We will come back. We will move into a closed session, and then we will move back into an open work session to discuss the board's governance manual. So, at this point, we will adjourn. There you go. Ding ding. Let's come back. Can we say 10 minutes?